Good evening.
Good evening. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046 PL 1975 C 231 S 1 amended 2006 C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park press, the new coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillum.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Lotaraca.
Ms. Lazinski.
Mr. Pinkney.
Mr. Saunders.
Ms. Atien.
Ms. Sabes Anderson.
Please stand before the glass.
(Inaudible)
There are no presentations.
Okay, then we'll move right into your report. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to... Good evening, Board members. I would like to direct your attention to some attachments, starting at A 6A. You'll find there information about our overall enrollment. I wanted to break that out for you, and so you will see graphs and data that represents a little more of a comprehensive view in terms of what our enrollment looks like in the district. So what I have is the overall enrollment, starting from September into now, and it shows, if you see the bold green at the bottom, an increase of 112 students since September. Then I have it broken out by buildings. So since September of this year, our enrollment has increased by 31 students at the high school.
One moment. One moment. Madam Superintendent, so that the public has an opportunity to come in, could you please come in and take a seat? There are plenty of seats up front here, please come in.
Good evening.
Madam Superintendent, will you continue, please?
Yes. So the next report shows the enrollment from January of last year to this year for the high school. I'm very pleased to share that there's an increase there of 26 students, and we're attributing that largely in part to the academies and the offerings that we have there. If you look at the by-grade breakdown here, you'll note that there has been an increase across three grade levels and one decrease noted in grade five, I mean, grade 11, of five students. And so this is the kind of information that we are continuing to look at so that we can be very strategic in the programs and the services that we are providing as a school district to make sure that we are capturing the best and the most that we can for our students. And so as you continue to go through the report, you'll again see the year over year, year to year, so January, last year's from January this year documentation, and so when we look from last year to this year, we're looking at an overall decrease in the number of students. So while we've increased from September of this school year, when we look at where we were last year to this year, we are noting a decrease in our enrollment. And so, moving to the middle school, we see that we have had an increase since the beginning of this school year of five students. Looking at it from last year this time, from last year January to this year January, we're noticing a decrease of 19 students. What I have directed my team to do is look specifically at the grade levels where we're having a decrease, and again, assessing the programs and the extracurricular activities that we have in place for those grade levels. We have a decreased enrollment in our sixth grade, that's significant, from January last year to January this year, and so we continue to look at that against the other grade levels which have increased from January to this year. So we're having ongoing conversations at the executive committee level, as well as at the buildings and within our cabinet meetings. We have an enrollment increase at Bradley Elementary School, 19 students. However, when we look at it year over year, again, similar story, and we're seeing a decrease by 13 from January last year to January this year, which is fairly consistent throughout our district, where we continue to see a decrease from January last year to January this year. The report continues and goes on and shows all of the other schools. When we look at Obama School, we see that there's an increase from September of 18 students, yet when we look at it from January to January, again, a decrease. And so this is pretty consistent throughout our district's data, and it has other implications. We're not sure necessarily what we want to correlate these things to, but we continue to monitor and watch that because we do understand that we have to be fiscally responsible and that we have impending budget cuts on the horizon. So we're always looking for ensuring that we aren't being fiscally responsible. In addition, I want to just say, yesterday, we had our mid-year convocation. I've received a lot of feedback regarding that. The mid-year convocation was an opportunity for us to come together as a Blue Bishop family and just become invigorated and energized around the programs and the services that we have in the district. It was professional development designed for us, by us, and so, very excited, a lot of excitement around colleagues, providing professional development for colleagues. Principals and their instructional leadership teams came out. They each represented with their individual personalities to show the work that's going on in their schools, the hard work that they're all engaged in, and overall, I've only received positive feedback and actually a request to have it on a monthly basis. Kind of can't do that because that wouldn't be a mid-year convocation, that'd be a monthly convocation. We're not in a situation where we're going to have full days off like that. But that just speaks to the heart of what has been going on, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Are there any questions? If you Board members did not have an opportunity to attend the mid-year convocation as I did, it was outstanding. This was from the superintendent's imagination, and she brought her team in, they were in place, and they rocked. And it was being a family, everyone was excited, and it was so different because we always have a beginning of the year convocation, but this was a mid-year. And so they turned up, meaning it was professional, and it was family-oriented, and it was just a very warm feeling amongst the staff, all that were there. So congratulations to you, Madam Superintendent, for an outstanding job, and also to your team. They were awesome. So, thank you.
It was definitely a team effort. I cannot, you know, something of that magnitude could not happen by one person. So I want to thank the individuals here on the executive committee for their work. Ms. Buford, really, she's just put in extra time, overtime at the high school almost till 11 o'clock the night before to ensure that things were orderly and properly planned and prepared for our students, I mean, for our staff, and the respective departments really showed up and showed out. Our focus again is around mental health issues, social and emotional learning, and specifically addressing the needs of Black and Brown and Hispanic students, which is what is represented in our district. And our keynote speaker was very candid in his delivery in talking about those specific needs, so I was very delighted about that. Also want to take a moment to give a special shout-out of thanks to the Asbury Park Toy Drive because they donated over 200 pullovers with the Asbury Park School District logo that our staff were able to enjoy as a part of the giveaways and celebration from yesterday's event.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And now, number seven, to public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. So I invite you to step to the podium. Remember, you have three minutes. Please give us your name and your address, please. And out of respect for everyone, please remember, it's just three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent. My name is Saran Davis, 1039 Somerville Avenue. 2018 was a very hard year for me. I lost a close friend in Mr. James F. Malau. I lost my brother in August. I had a, my nephew was paralyzed from the waist down, 15-years-old, gun-shooting in Asbury Park, and then to close it off, I was non-renewed. I was non-renewed because of an individual who took it upon herself to lie, not to lie to me, but she lied on me, she lied to Dr. Howard, she lied to Dr. Lewis, I mean, Director Jordan, and she also lied to Asbury Park Police Department. I'm standing here because a person that lies is the people that run away. The people that tell the truth is the people that always stand here fighting. I would never ask my community to support me if I was a liar. The same individual, I've been here 17 years, a folder with nothing in it, but dust, nothing in it. We had an individual who came here for two years and lied to one two people. Now what if I say this individual was in another school district, and it's her third offense? That's the homework, that's something to think about. But will I be here? I just want you to think to yourself, what if this was you? What if this was your child? What if someone that you loved, that somebody lied to and tried to destroy your character? But with the backbone that I have for my community, my family, I would not let a liar destroy me. That's why I'm here today. I have a folder of information that's here for me, I would like to pass it out to you guys, for people who don't know me. And then I have every, I have a character letter from every principal in the school district. So I would like to hand this out to you guys. I work with Ms. Buford, she knows what type of person I am. I'm here because I didn't do anything wrong. I don't need an attorney, I don't need a union president, all I needed was anybody to ask me any question they want, and I give you the honest answer. The same way I did with Dr. Howard called me to the central office, I was honest with her from day one. And when I showed her facts, and she looked back at the other facts that the lady presented to her, she deleted stuff. She deleted stuff, and I'm still standing here saying, I did not do nothing wrong. Don't make me a victim over something I didn't do. That's all I'm asking. And when I give you this folder, I hope you take the opportunity and time to look through it, because this is the person that I am. It's nothing else to it. Thank you.
Good evening. Leroy Hayes, 1312 Fourth Avenue, 45-year retired coach and teacher in the district. I'm coming to you this evening to speak on behalf of this young man that just addressed you. It's very few times that in a community you find a young man that goes out of his way, especially for our young kids. This gentleman has been involved in athletics for the 50 years that I've known him in Asbury Park, taking kids to Florida to win us a national championship in Pop Warner Football, helping any kid that he can volunteer in his time to coach football in Asbury Park School System. I'm asking the Board to really consider what direction you're going to go in with this gentleman. As you can see with the support that he has from the community, there will be more support, and, you know, just do the right thing. Thank you.
Jacqueline Tillman, 1039 Somerville Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm standing here on behalf of my son, and I would not dare, I'm elder in the church, my home is a safe haven for children of all kinds, no matter what they do, we never discriminate, we never put down, we always build up. And I'm standing here on behalf of my son, that's the way my son was raised, and that's how he is. He's not a liar, he's a protector, and he's anything for the children in this community. He loved his job, he never missed days, he was always on time, he was there sometimes just to open up the door. Our door was always open for everyone. I've been in the district, as I said last week, last month, 34 years, and I would not stand here and lie to you about my child. My child, we lost one son, and I refuse to lose another son to a bunch of lies and a bunch of things that have been told on him. I refuse to allow anyone to run my son's reputation. My son's reputation outshines anyone, and I would not stand here and say anything to that, and anybody that knows him can attest to that. So I don't know what the deal is, I don't know what's going on, but I'm telling you as a mother, hell has no theory like a woman scorn. Hell has no theory like a mother when you try to destroy her son's reputation. So may God bless you, I pray that you will make the right decision, because we are not going to stop until we get justice done, no matter how much it costs and no matter what we have to do. These are my young men and my young women here, they can attest that I'm there for my community, I'm there for my family, I'm there for those others where no one else wants to be bothered with, and I will not stop today until I get justice for my son. God bless you, you have a nice day, and I pray that you make the right decision concerning my child.
My name is Milagro Gomez. I work for Asbury Park SCOC. I'm here, my address is 1515 Fourth Avenue in Asbury Park, that's where we are located when we give our meetings. Basically, I'm here tonight, I wanted to see, I wanted to see how it was possible, how we can work, we work in getting involved with the ESSA. As for every Students Succeed Act, we wanted to know, it says that all parents to be involved for parents engagement. We wanted to know if we can work together with you, if we possibly can collaborate with you moving forward, working towards the ESSA. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Peavy, I live at 506 Comstock, Asbury Park, born and raised in Asbury. Saran is like one of my brothers, we lived two doors from each other my whole life, and it's hard to see him go through what he going through, because I know he's a great man, a good coach, a good father, a good friend, and it's sad to see him go through this for something that he's being lied on, and it's just tough to see because I know how strong he is, and it's hurt me because he's a good young man, and I hope y'all do the best y'all can, and just do what's good by him, because I hate to see this. It's my first time ever coming to a Board meeting, I lived in this town for 40 years, so I'm sorry you're going through this, bro, but that's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else?
Is it on?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm a little nervous.
Put the mic to you.
Jalen Page.
Address.
508 Prospect. I'm a little nervous, so I can't give you guys like a little paragraph, but I do want to say, I hope you guys do what's right. That's all.
This is your time, so if you wish to come to the mic, please do.
How you doing? My name is Gary Dort, 602 Comstock Street, and just one thing I can say, when we sit outside after school, no matter what race, creed, or color, the kids always come by. When you coming back, Mr. Davis? When you coming back, Mr. Davis? That's all I ever hear. So just put that in consideration, all the kids, every time they walk past. Mr. Davis, when you coming back? When you coming back? You just say, I don't really know, but that's all.
How you doing? My name is Knowledge Bennett, 1110 Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Sitting in this audience tonight and seeing what, you know, Saran Davis is going through, it reminds me of my time growing up here as a child in Asbury Park, and it reminds me of what we all know as second chances, right? And looking around at the people that's in the audience, and even people that's sitting at the Board who I know personally or who I have had some sort of involvement with growing up in the city, it reminds me of times in which I got into certain troubles, and I've had some of the same people here today backing for, you know, our brother Saran, affectionately known as Ashawn. You know, those same people was there for me some 20, 30 years ago, per se, and I just reflect back on the life that I've been allowed to live up until this point, specifically over the last 10 years, when I made certain changes within my life. And sitting here, I realize that if I wasn't given a second chance, you know, neither I or the people whose lives I positively affected around the world because of the platform that I have access to, I wouldn't have had that opportunity. You know, so just thinking of that, I want you guys to take into consideration all of the lives that, you know, Saran has affected in such a positive way, not just here locally, but, you know, nationwide that I know of, because I have taken some of those trips with him as well. But like just looking at my coaches, my former coaches, Coach Hayes, Coach Beatty, you know, I remember a time I got into some issues in the middle school, and I think even at this time, Ms. Buford may have still been there, and I remember it was a situation where we was literally, me and one of my brothers was being, you know, kicked out of school, and these two men, you know, sat on the Board, I don't remember what Board it was, it wasn't the Board of Education, but it was another Board, another panel that we had to go in front of, which was going to determine whether or not we was going to be expelled from the eighth grade or allowed to go to the ninth grade, and thus therefore to college and so forth and so on. And these two men were two of the men who came to my aid, you know, and made a decision to see to it that we were allowed to stay in school, and those are pivotal moments in a child's life. And just like children go through things, so do adults, and adults need people too to come to their aid, you know, which will mark pivotal moments in their life, which will give them the opportunity to go on and continue doing things that are positive, you know, that our world needs today more so than ever before. You know, so just with that in mind, you know, none of us are perfect, you know, whether, we know, those who know Ashawn and know his character inside out, we know that these are lies, but even beyond all of that, nobody sitting at this panel and nobody sitting in this audience is perfect, right? And we all stand the chance of being wrongfully accused of something and wouldn't want that wrongful accusation to affect our lives in such a negative way, the way in which it has been affecting Ashawn's life, and not only his life, but like Gary just mentioned, even the children's lives who are not seeing him on a daily basis. And one of the reasons why I brought my coaches up, because I've had, you know, positive men and women in my life throughout my life, but it was something about the representation of strong Black men that we had access to as children growing up that helped shape us and helped to keep us in line, you know, and I know for a fact that he is one of the, if not the strongest, you know, one of the representations that's coming specifically from this community born and raised that these kids have access to, and I just don't want to see that taken away any longer. Thank you.
Daquan Blain Bennett, 1110 Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. Being from Asbury Park, I just want to say, it's two paths you could take, it's two paths you could take, right? You can go, you could decide to take a darker path, you could take a brighter path. I graduated from Asbury Park in 2014. If you play football for Coach Ashawn, put your hands up, everybody who plays football for him. I came, like I said, I came out in 2014, you got kids in here that came out 216, 218, 215, and we're here, we're offering a test to a man that helped us take the right path. Everybody that you see here took the right path, and I would definitely credit that to him in some way, shape, form, or fashion. Football, like I said, football is a game of inches, but at the same time, it's a game of life. Before every game, he gave us that speech that followed me to this day. Without him, I wouldn't have been a graduate of Asbury Park High School, I wouldn't have been a graduate of Montclair State University, and I wouldn't be given back to my city today. So I just want, I hope you guys can reconsider your option, your opinion on the things you want to do with him, and may the best of luck.
If I may, before the next person speaks, members of the Board, we've heard tonight, and I would imagine we're going to continue to hear some very heartfelt and compassionate words about Mr. Davis. The matter is currently pending at Perk, it's in litigation, and therefore, as much as we may want to respond to the members of the community who've come out tonight in support of Mr. Davis, I just remind you that this is a matter that's actively being litigated, and so I just want you all to keep that in mind.
Good evening. My name is Edward Hunley, 1015 Fourth Avenue. Just calling to say, I know this man over 40 years, him and his family, and like I said, he's been a loyal guy, a leader of men, coached Pop Warner for over 15 years, and when you coach Pop Warner in our town, it's not just coaching. You got to feed these kids, you got to make sure these kids get home, it's just not a coaching job, you know what I'm saying? And this man has been in the district for over 17 years, and like I said, you can't, you know, this has got to be like one of the most loyal guys here, and it's not easy making it out of Asbury Park, it's not. So that's all I have to say.
My name is Bashim Parker, 117 Memorial Drive, Asbury Park. I think what you see behind us is more of a reflection of Mr. Davis, and I think when I come up here to speak, it's bigger than him actually, because I represent a child of Asbury Park, so, you know, and also growing up here, there's something that we don't have when it comes to the school district, and I heard you speak about specifically the Black, the Brown, and Hispanics. It's not too many familiar faces when it comes to trust, and when you come to the traumas that come with growing up in the city of Asbury Park, trust is a big thing when you want to come and you want to have a familiar face to share when you can't go to home and you don't have that home structure, which affects a lot of the Black and Brown in here. So Mr. Davis represents a part of the school district that gives those kids a familiar face that they can reach out to, and not only speaking on behalf of him, I speak on behalf of the children and say, who do they turn to when you remove a person like Mr. Davis from that structure or lack of structure that they have when they could come to school and speak to? And I think Mr. Davis and among a few other of the men that you have here, and I even go to scratch with his father, and Ms. Buford was one of the few familiar faces that I had when the school didn't so much, the personnel at the school didn't so much reflect the people that we were comfortable speaking to, I think they gave us that, and I think Mr. Davis extends that and gives these kids the same opportunity. Thank you.
(Applause).
What I would like to say to you this evening is that I recall before becoming an elected board member that I sat in those seats. And there were things that I wanted to say and did say to those board members. And I waited for an answer and expected an answer and didn't get one. And it wasn't until I became a board member that I realized that there were certain things that I could not say, that I could not address. So it's not that we don't hear you or see you. That's why we have our board council, who speaks for us. And I can't say anything other than what I've said to you this evening. So if there's anything else that you need to say, please come forward. If not, I must close the public participation.
I have, I have one more thing to say. I'm good? Oh, okay. Like I said before, I'm not. Like I said before, I am a little nervous. But like, I would like to say thank you for listening to us all. You know, we really do care about Coach Ashawn. Like I said before, hopefully you guys, you know, do what y'all have to do. And, you know, make sure everything goes right. Thank you.
If there are no other comments?
Please, man. I'm sorry. My name is William Young. Eighth, Devil Drive, Netto. Know our preference. I ran here. So we here as a community to ask you, staff, administrators, in reference to our, our brother. We know in law and the politics, you guys can use discretion. And we ask you to use discretion when you call him my brother back to work. He has, as a kid, he has assisted me and other members of our community in investing our lives, our funding, our energy, day to day, into our community. He had the choice to become a law enforcement officer, to work outside the district. He had all these opportunities, but yet he chose to invest his life to Asbury Park. With that being said, a lot more, you don't have all night. Please use discretion, if you could use discretion, or call him back to work. This man need his job. You can see how much we love him. How much we care for him. And we ride with him. All right? So tonight, please use discretion and bring our brother back to work. Thanks a lot.
If there are no one else who wishes to speak at this time, I thank you for coming tonight and I thank you for your comments. And at this time, I have to close public participation. Dr. Howard, you have a monthly hit report?
Yes. The report you see tonight has a total of nine.
Excuse me, please, community? Could you please leave in a quiet, orderly fashion? Thank you very much. Dr. Howard?
Good evening. The hit report that is in your packet reflects nine total, excuse me, fourteen total reported incidents and nine total found it. The month of November, there were four incidents that were found it. December, there were four incidents. And thus far, January had one. Majority of the found in hits came from the middle school, which is normal. Majority of the hits that were verbal, name calling, teasing, and things like that. The action that was taking was one, we had one alternate replacement because that was of a sexual nature. And all of the others were highest, in school suspension, where we have interventions in place. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. New Jersey State Minister reports school board recognition, oh, excuse me, recognition month. Am I to read that? I can read it? Okay. Whereas, okay, this is a school board recognition month where as New Jersey's public schools serve approximately 1.4 million children. And whereas the educational goals of these districts are chartered by local school boards, which serve as advocates for public education as they work with school administrators, teachers, parents, and members of the community. And whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the community. And they convey to the school administration the public's expectation for the district. And whereas the school board members devote countless hours to their communities and public education at no pay. And whereas local board members dedicate extraordinary amounts of time and effort to receive training and to communicate with state and federal lawmakers on behalf of their communities' children. And whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2019 to be School Board Recognition Month in New Jersey, a time when residents can acknowledge the contributions made by the state's 5,000 local Board of Education members. Now therefore be it resolved that the Monmouth County School Boards Association, an organization with the goal of enhancing the work of local school boards, commends the dedication of the local school board members in Monmouth County. And be it further resolved that the Monmouth County School Boards Association encourages qualified citizens to consider serving on their local boards of education. That's it? All right. And so congratulations, board members.
And to all those who are board members on other boards.
Could we get a motion for item 11A and B on A2?
We need a motion, please? I need a second?
Second.
Question? Okay, Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Saunders? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Jones? Mr. Pinkney? Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
Board members, I'd like to request a consent agenda for pages B1, items on pages B1 to B8, which includes the addenda.
Question? I need a motion? A second? Question? Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
This is all items B1 through B8. Mr. Saunders? Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Jones? Ms. Abas Anderson? All motions carried.
And now, Mr. Hastings, will you have a moment? Your agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I present all items, C1 number one through C4 number nine?
I need a motion? Question? Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Mr. Grillo?
Yes, except for anything to do with Deal School.
Anything to do with?
With that, with the repayment of Deal School.
And Ms. Jones? And Ms. Abas Anderson?
Yes, with the exception of anything that everybody's to make.
Me too.
Mr. Saunders? Thank you, all items carried.
So this is it. Thank you. I need a motion?
I do have one, one thing. Did we vote on, maybe I didn't hear correctly, B13A?
On?
For policy?
Yes, we voted for all items, page B1 through page B8.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, that's why, all right.
It was the page numbers, not the item numbers.
I need to abstain from 13A.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.